We're going to go ahead and get started. Want to welcome everyone here in the boardroom, our board members and district personnel, and especially welcome our patrons and principal from the White Pine Elementary School. This is our first attempt, our maiden voyage on doing a virtual meeting, and we just really appreciate you attending. We have a couple of board members there as well. It is Thursday, January 21st, 2021, at 5:30, and our board meeting is being held in the boardroom on Legacy Campus. We'll go ahead and begin with our roll call.
Larry Jepson, board member.
Rattle Bagley, board member.
Steve Norton, superintendent.
Roger Pulsifer, board member.
Kathy Chris-Jensen, board member.
Jeff Nielsen, board member.
And Dale Hanson, business administrator.
And, let's see, Chris and, there we go.
Terry Rhodes, board member.
And is Chris there?
Chris is excused, he's in a vaccination line.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll go ahead and start things off with our pledge and mission statement given by Larry Jepson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So first on our agenda tonight, we want to announce four more of our, oh, thank you, thank you, sorry.
Our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world.
Thank you, Larry. We're going to go ahead and announce four of our teachers of the year. From Bridgeline, we have Jennifer Loscher, who is a counselor there. From Heritage, we have Mary Knight, who is a sixth grade teacher. From Lincoln Elementary, Camilla Frenzel, who is a sixth grade teacher. And from Lewiston, Lisa Anderson, who is a second grade teacher. And we really miss not having them here with their families to receive this recognition, but they will be recognized. Okay, next on our agenda is the public input. And before we have any public input, I just want to go through the requirements for public input. The Cache County Board of Education welcomes public comments from district patrons during regular board meetings. Feedback is an important part of being responsive to the public. Participants must sign up prior to the comment period using the clipboard at the back of the boardroom, or in your case, at, in the room where you are. Each speaker is provided three minutes to address the board. Board members will not directly respond to comments or answer questions during the comment period, but if the speaker would like someone to follow up with a response, they are welcome to make that request. So if you do participate, please leave your phone number and your name on a paper there. During public comment, speakers are asked to not address employment or personnel issues, complaints where other avenues for appeal are available, and items which have a separate public hearing. Patrons are always welcome to submit written feedback directly to the superintendent or to board members. So I'll just turn it over to you, Terry.
All right, thank you. We have on the list of people who will be speaking tonight Rod Bullock, Melanie Sweet, and Shelley Healy. So we'll go in that order.
Do we have a way of timing this so they can see the time?
Okay, I only have three minutes, and as I stand here, as Shelley invited me to come to this board meeting, I just want to express my gratitude to each and every one of you. I am very grateful to be a part of this district. I've always felt that I was appreciated in the district, but now I know that you concern about us. I'm grateful for the manner in which you've handled everything. Coming from my end as an educator, yeah, it's been a trick, but I think you've done, guys have done a fabulous job from top to bottom. Appreciate Tim Smith always letting us know what's going on. We have an awesome principal, but if I was just to say anything, it'd be thank you. I think things have gone very well. Whoever thought in our right mind that we'd be actually teaching without any school closures and be almost in February of 2021? Last few words or thank you. I appreciate all that you guys have done.
Thank you. We appreciate all that you do as well.
Okay, Shelley Healy, principal. So our experience here has been a very positive one as well. I will second what Rod said. It is, it has been an amazing year, and the support we felt from the district has been absolutely incredible. From technology, bringing in these cameras for each school to be able to use has been amazing. Webcams on our desktops and our classrooms have been available to us. Online school, as hard as it was, I believe it was beneficial for the students and us teachers and me, we learned a lot about technology. And I know Rod didn't mention it, but wow, that connection he made with the children in their homes during that time was so valuable. And he would tell me, I can't believe how incredible this is to be able to visit with them in their homes and give them speech therapy in their homes via computers. Being back, it was surreal at first to see little kids in their masks and walk through those classrooms and see all those desks right apart, but our teachers are amazing. They are resilient, they are innovative, and school is happening. The kids are happy. They need to be with each other. They need to be in this environment, and I am so lucky that I get to be a principal and was a teacher for years in Cache County. I think you are, I think this is an amazing district to be in. Do you want me to speak to anything else? Okay, yeah, I've been asked, I've been asked to talk about quarantine and how that's affected our schools. Initially, it was, it was difficult in that teachers, once somebody was identified, it could knock out up to nine kids in their classroom, and they'd have to do online school for that many kids, and now it's changed. So we don't have as many kids gone out of the classroom needing to be home, and that's a wonderful thing. Masks, not that big of a deal. Do you want me to speak to anything else? Oh, student-teacher engagement. Being able to visit with them and talk to them is, it's doable, but we miss the hugs. We miss leaning down and talking to them, to their face. I think the children miss that connection as well, and I know our faculty misses that connection. We usually, every month at least, would get together around some kind of food, some kind of theme, and we haven't been able to do that because we can't eat around each other, we can't be close. Students in the lunchroom can't be sitting too close to each other either, but they just use their bigger voices. So they still enjoy lunch. Again, I'll just finish up by saying thank you to the district and thank you to my teachers, and the community here in Richmond has been super supportive. And with that, Melanie, I would love you to speak to your experience as a parent. We do have a parent here. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
Melanie Sweet. The technology during, when we were doing the online thing was a little difficult because some of us parents didn't really know, like, coding the words, so that was a little difficult. It was interesting to know more about how our children are actually learning everything in school, so that was very educational. I know some students are having difficulties with the lunchroom, they can't really talk to their friends and can't be close, can't do the hugging anymore, but for most part it's not as bad as we all originally thought it was going to be. And it's nice that they're back in school, they're not all at home quarantined. Is that good? Okay.
Thank you, Melanie. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
That's everyone who wants to speak, so you can continue with the meeting. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We do appreciate our technology people who have set this up, and it was great to hear your comments, and we appreciate all that everyone has done, from principal to teacher to students to parents, to make this work this year so we can still have students in school. If there's ever anything that you would like us to do, we're just a phone call away, either the school board or the people from the district office. We'll go ahead, and you are welcome to stay and listen to the rest of our meeting, I hope that you do, so you can kind of see what goes on here at our board meeting. It's not a very long agenda tonight, and you might find it kind of interesting. We'll start with, I'll take a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
Terry and Chris, are you able to vote?
Yeah, Dale, I'm here, and I say yay. I'm still firing at my computer.
So all of the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Okay, we'll move down to our consent agenda, and, down to our action agenda, sorry. And our first item is a request for the approval of the Skyview and Smithfield Community Recreation Center joint use agreement revision. I will take a motion to approve that. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look over it, and...
I make a motion to accept the approval of the Skyview and Smithfield Community Recreation Center joint use agreement revision.
I second it.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Yes, this has been, I think, one of the better things that two local government agencies have done together. And we appreciate the fact that we built on Logan's Rec Center and used a lot of the ideas, but it's run perfectly now for how many years, Dale? So... Okay? But I just want you to know that it's really a great example of two government agencies making, having synergy in an operation that both got more because they decided to cooperate.
Anyone else? All right, we'll go ahead and vote. Okay, so my vote is not right. I was just moving over to make it. Yeah. Oh, it does? Okay. Okay. Thanks.
So all the votes are in unanimously in favor of the motion. I'll correct this one.
Okay, thank you, Dale. And the director of the Rec Center has asked that as soon as this passes that, we get a copy of it over to him for the Smithfield Council. So Dale, will you take care of that?
Yeah, because I have the signed copy, the city council has signed. The other one has your signature, has your name on the signature line as president.
Okay.
You were president at the time that it was created, so maybe we can go ahead and have you sign that if you'd like.
Okay. Terry, what do you want to do about that? Could you hear what we said?
I did hear it, and so if it has your name on it, just sign it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, I will take a motion to approve the board policy updates.
I move that we approve the board policy updates.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? Or questions? Mike, when you resubmit this to go into our board policies, will you just have agenda reformat so that it works, so it's similar to all of our other policies? Okay. Okay. Do I have to even ask about that anymore, or does that just automatically happen? Okay. I'm going to try and be more careful this time.
All the votes are in unanimously, unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay. Next on our action agenda, I'll take a motion to approve to retire the policy entitled "Elementary Purchasing Procedure" under the Board Policy Section 8000. Instruction.
I move that we retire the policy "Elementary Purchasing Procedure" under Board Policy Section 8000 instructions.
I second that.
Okay, any questions for Gary? Anything you want to say about it, Gary? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on that one.
Okay, all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay. All right. The last action item, I will take a motion to approve to amend the 2021 school fee schedule.
I make a motion to approve the amendment of the 2021 school fee schedule.
I second it.
Anyone have any questions for Mike about this? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
All the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Just for your knowledge, those of you who are at White Pine, we have our action items presented in a report form at our first meeting of the month. Then we have the materials that we can study and read at home, and we ask questions at that first meeting. Then we vote on it during the second meeting, still ask questions. So it's not like we're just passing these without having looked at them, having talked about them, but that's kind of how the format goes. All right, we're going to go ahead and move down to our reports, and our first report is for the monthly financial report.
All right, so the report that you have is for the month of December, and the report itself has very little change from what we had shown in the November report itself. But the one thing I wanted to focus on this evening quickly was, was a second report on there that had to look at revenue estimates, updated revenue estimates that we've received now from the state. I've got to get some eyes on if I can read this thing. What the report shows is on the far left side, the amounts that were used in our initial budget that was approved by the board last June for this new school year. And, and then the numbers just to the right of that, the revised estimate, are the numbers that I've just received from the state school board, based on, basically adjustments from the October 1 count, plus, if you remember, when we built the budget back in June, we were, we were thinking, well, we didn't know what was going to happen because COVID had just hit, the economy was going south, and the, there was a lot of question about what budget items the legislature would stay with for this year because they had called a special session and read, readjusted the settlements. But with that, they did actually increase the value of the weighted pupil 1.8%, and that was the biggest change where almost all other state agencies experienced declines in revenues or their budgeted amounts for this year. So they did look out for us very well in the process. If you look at the very top of that first page, it's looking at state revenues, and these are just unrestricted state revenue line items. So grades K-12 is the one that we actually got an increase of 771,000 above what we had initially built the budget estimate out. So that's a 1.21% increase. They eliminated the funding for the foreign exchange program for this year, so even though we do have several foreign exchange students in a couple of our high schools, we're not getting any added funded, added funding for them, so we've had to eliminate that. Professional staff cost formula went up 1.5%. The flex allocation, the legislature did away with for this year, so we had to eliminate that, that we had estimated. And then the voted in board leeway amounts, there's a formulas to what you'll receive, but then on top of that, depending on the funding level that the state has, they either apply a greater or a lesser estimate, or an increase on the value per WPU that we receive. And so those amounts actually went down just a little bit from what we had built, but they're basically, basically even. So if you look in total state funding, we're up almost $407,000 over what we had originally built our budget at. And if you look at local revenues, really the only changes we have in there have to do with our unappropriated fund balance that we had a year end after the audit was completed, we finished in the end of September. And, so that was 6.6 million. And then carryover budgets, these are budgets that the schools are carrying over, such as supply allocations and for classroom supplies, for custodial supplies, for equipment, those kind of things that carry over from year to year. Those totaled 961,000 more than what we had originally estimated, because they don't try to guess each school's carryover when we built that budget. So really, that is, local funds is 7.5 million, but as far as what we really were building the base budget on, that's up about 407,000. And the reason for that, if you look at the bottom of that first page, when we're funded, you're funded on prior year plus growth. So when we look at prior year, when we were building this year's budget, we were doing this in April and May, and trying to estimate what our total, our average membership would be across our district for the year. But as you can see, in kindergarten, we had overestimated it by six students. In grades K through 12, we had overestimated by 49 students. And so that, that had a little effect on, on what the funding would be for us, but then the growth part comes in and comparing the prior year's October 1 count with this year's October 1 count. And so I think with COVID, it had an impact in some areas, such as, for example, the kindergarten. We had, we had figured 1,331 kindergarten students would show up this year, but on October 1, we only had 1,228, so we were down 103 students, kindergarten students. But in grades K, or 1 through 12, we were actually up 90 students more than we had estimated. A number of those, I think, are, are kids moving into both Bridgeline and Green Canyon High School. A lot of those come from Logan and from outside, but, so those, those numbers really affected us, but all in all, we're pretty, pretty much online with where the budget was built. Second page has to do with all of the restricted programs that we offer, and, and there's changes up and down in all of those, but the largest one has to, is probably down at the very bottom. Start of the year, we didn't have the figure for the student, teacher and student success program, TSA program, and that, we picked up just over $3 million for that. So that's the bulk of the 3.1 total increase we had in restricted funds. And in the capital outlay, capital equalization funding, we picked up another 486,000 over what we'd built the estimate. So, so the estimates themselves, they're not great increases over what we had estimated, but they're, they're positive increases. So I think we're, well, I know we're in, we're in good shape for this year. We have been expending a fair amount of our carryover funds at year end, the unappropriated fund balance, both in salary augmentations that we paid out to employees, and then other expenses that we've incurred that don't qualify under the ESRS, the federal emergency aid grants that we're receiving. And so those, those items, you know, we've, we've had to cover, and luckily, we've been in a position we could do that. So COVID hitting like it did, we were maybe kind of a perfect storm. We were ready for it when it came, and, and we're in good shape that way, so.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Dale?
Why don't you just update them on the latest money coming in from the federal feds? Just, that's, that's another relief package that's going to help.
Yeah, there's a second round of ESRS funding that's coming in. The, those funds, well, we have an application we've got to turn in by January 26th, so that's just next week. But our district is, is scheduled to receive 4.7 million or 4.8 million of these relief funds that will really be helpful. And, and the use of them is, has to be all COVID related, you know, trying to resolve issues that are a result of the COVID pandemic. But there's a, they even allow you to go in to do building upgrades or, you know, things to try to help with air handling units or things that can, anything that can try to alleviate some of the challenges we're facing with the virus itself are eligible to be used with those funds. So I think the, the main focus they want to put it on is to help us in grade retention with, with students who've, with last year, they didn't, across the state, they've seen a decline in, in, kids have been able to retain in the past. A lot of it had to do with online instruction or kids that didn't even participate after school was, was gone, had been moved strictly online. So that'll be the, the real thrust, is trying to catch students back up and get them back up on...
So does that mean that we might need to have more people hired to help with that? Or do we have enough people in place?
We're, we're going to meet tomorrow, teams have been working on, on the grant application, and we'll meet tomorrow, and personnel costs are certainly legitimate, especially for extra time and effort to catch kids up. So we'll, we'll go through and work out a plan and then present it to the board.
Okay.
And then I could just mention quickly, too, the, the National School Boards Association Convention that's held first week in April is all going to be held virtually, as we've all been told. But I did receive an email that gives a benefit to school districts or to school boards that would like to attend virtually, so that they have one fee that is, is assigned for a district team. So the first tier is for a team of nine team members, so that would actually be the seven board members, superintendent, myself, that's what we traditionally have going to the convention anyway. And so for a one-time fee, and I'm, I'm, I still got to get a clarification on the acronyms of the two different categories, but regular fee for that would be $3,600 for the entire group as one fee. And then they have a group called the NatCom slash Cube, and I have to find out what that represents, but that's $2,700. So I'm not sure which category we fall in, in between those two, but, so it'd be something the school board would want to decide is, do they want us to, to register everyone as a team? And I think it'd allow them to just individually participate in any and all of the, the sessions that are held virtually during the conference, but that's a lot less expensive than typically when we've taken the whole school.
Is there an individual price on that paper? What does it cost just to... What does it cost just to do?
It doesn't have an individual price, I don't know that.
So what's the date that we need to know if we want to sign up for that?
Well, we, the early bird registration's got to be in by February 26th.
So that's next Tuesday?
Yeah, so that's actually a month away, February.
Oh, February, thank you, yeah, okay.
So are the sessions recorded? Do you, can you watch them at your leisure? Do you have to be there at that exact time?
It's a good question. I didn't read that when I went through the, I'm not sure. We'd have to find that out.
We'll find that out.
Okay. And what are the dates on it again, April?
It's April 8th through the 10th, I believe.
So it's probably not on there and I haven't read a lot about the information that's coming in on the national convention because I just assumed we probably weren't going to go. Are they doing it for the three days then?
Yeah, it's three days, so it's April 8th through the 10th.
Okay, April 8th through the 10th. And do they have like a variety of workshops that you choose from or do they have just, at this time, here's what we're going to do? This is the workshop we're going to do.
We'd have to go online and just see what courses are being offered.
Yeah, I've, I've done some, it's going to be a smorgasbord, so you'll be choosing what you, just like when you go in person.
Okay. So we don't need to make a decision on this, but probably we need to discuss it maybe at our next meeting. And do any of you have any questions or comments right now that, and just thinking about it, are, are you interested in paying that?
I guess it a lot depends whether it's recorded. If I could watch it later at evening, it might, on weekend or that evening would be preferable, but so.
Okay.
That kind of depends.
I guess the other thought that comes to me, I thought what the Utah School Boards did was just about right. When I think of three days of online, I'm not sure how much I'm going to hang on to that.
Yeah. Well, I would think that we just each get to choose, you know, what we would like to see, but we do need to find out if it could be watched in the evening.
We'll find that out.
Okay. Roger, do you have any? Okay, yeah. Do you have any thoughts on it, Roger?
No, I'm with Larry.
Okay. All right, so maybe next time we could get more information if you can find out. Okay, thanks. All right, moving right along here. I can get my cursor to work. Next, we have our board committee reports and Randall is going to give us a report on the Cash Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, I am on the Cash Chamber of Commerce Committee and usually there's not a ton to report on that, but I thought I ought to check in every four years or so and kind of tell you what's going, what's going on. We are a member of the Cash Chamber of Commerce. They have several things they do in the valley. The main one they do is a monthly luncheon they usually do on the third Tuesday of the month. And I try to hit a couple of those a year, see if I could make it and represent our board. With the virus and what's going on, they did not do that for several months. For a few months, they did it strictly online, but just recently they have done a hybrid one where you can watch it online or go and attend in person at the Riverwoods Conference Center. I was able to go to the one last Tuesday. It was, it was kind of nice. They had it set up where you were spaced out, everyone wore a mask, it was a good event and you could have watched it online if you wanted. They have a gala they do once a year, they're pushing that back, usually it's in February, but they'll do that at a later date. They did have a magazine they put out, I don't know if this is yearly or twice a year, but they had a very nice little ad here, I think Jenda was probably responsible for this, that talks about our district, has some stats that are really nice here. They talk about our graduation rate, our proficiency in reading, our high test scores. So it's a really nice little article here. In the very end, it says, "These results speak to the hard work, dedication and quality of our educators, support staff, parents and students." So I'll just pass this down if you want to take a look at it and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to make a little comment here in this section also about an idea of now that we have our strategic plan and it's on a flyer, how do you feel about us getting some copies made of that and getting that information out to our principals so they know what our strategic plan is in this district? And then each of us take a stack of them and when we go to our school community councils, give them to some of the parents so that they have a copy of it as well. What are your thoughts on that?
That's a good way to disseminate it because then you can answer questions if they have any, you know, at the same time. Yeah?
How many do you think each one of us would need to take to the, do you have about 10 people on the school community councils?
Approximately.
So we need at least 260? Okay, then plus the principals.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All righty. Okay, on our board president report, Terry.
Am I on?
You're on.
Great. First of all, I want to thank everyone who helped make this meeting possible, especially Tim, Clayton and Spencer. Wow. I watched Spencer, he looked like the Flash over here at the last minute trying to switch rooms for us. And between he and Shelley, I think they switched the room in like eight minutes. It was pretty amazing to watch. So thank you so much and thank you to our parents who came and our parents who responded to our email and our teachers who came. We had two teachers that were here and they just left. And Chris made it safely through the crazy vaccination line and the crazy after-work commute to Richmond. It's snowing. So thank you everyone for letting us try this little experiment. I hope we do it again. The other thing I wanted to mention was that in the past, the, our cash legislators have had weekly town hall meetings on Saturday mornings and we have taken turns attending those. This year, they are moving those to Thursday evenings at 7:00 PM, so, and they started tonight. So if we get done in time, you can join if you want, but they will all be virtual, streamed through the Cash GOP Facebook page. So we, they won't be meeting anyone in person. You have to submit your questions if you have any about, any ongoing legislation through this session by Wednesday each week. And I will get that link to everyone who, so that if you have a question, you can ask. But, so we won't assign anyone to interrupt their Saturday mornings through February this year because it'll be Thursday nights. The other, the last thing I wanted to say was please check the list of board committee assignments on board docs and let me know if you need to change or if you want to stay on the current committee assignments that you have. And check your bio on the board member page and let Carolyn know if you need anything changed. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. And thank you, Terry, for the great idea of giving this a shot to see if we could get some of the people on, more in the district, willing to come to the school and be part of this meeting and give us input. So we appreciate all that you did to help get this going. Next is our superintendent's report.
Well, I just echo what's been said. The technology department and Terry, with your prodding and pushing, we tried this and I'm telling you, as far as I'm concerned, what we heard from Rod, Melanie and Shelley was worth all the effort, all the time. It's always good to hear from the people who are out there, boots on the ground, doing the work in the classrooms and in the schools. And the fact that they would share the gratitude and appreciation back was, made my night, made my week and probably will get me through to the end of the school year. And I just want you to know how much I appreciate the fact that we went through the effort and it was well worth it. We'll look into the USBA and we'll get the strategic plan printed up and it's, it's been an interesting few months of this school year, but with everything going the way it's been going and the money coming from the federal government and the attitude of our teachers and staff, we're going to make it. And we'll be talking about graduation before we know it. And I just want to thank everyone for the, from the board on down for the support and appreciate the effort that went into tonight, so.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have anything else? Okay, then this meeting is adjourned. Thanks again, folks from White Pine.